This meeting in Aurora City Council, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five is hereby called order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin.
Okay, all present. Sergeant-at-Arms, is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms at this meeting? Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by the three retiring aldermen. Alderman Denell, Alderman Tolliver, and Alderman Warman. Will you please all stand and remain standing for the invocation afterwards?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask before he sits down, Ward nine Alderman, who will be sworn in again tonight to lead us in the invocation.
May we bow our heads. Father God, we come before you this evening. We come to you petitioning you as the legislators of the city of Aurora. We ask you for wisdom. We ask you for insight. We ask you to do the will of the residents and the businesses of the city of Aurora. God bless our first responders, our police, fire, those who are serving, and those who have served. Give us the wisdom to embrace change as we go forward in our city. In the name of your son. Amen.
I believe we have some mayor's office of community affairs presentations. Clinton?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem.
Good evening.
City council. We know today is a day of transition. As we transition from the fifty-ninth mayor, Richard Irvin's administration, to the sixtieth mayor, John Lash's administration, we look forward to moving forward in the future. Tonight, we bid farewell, as the mayor pro tem said, to three aldermen who have served, ranging from a year and a half to twelve years here on this council. We'll ask the mayor pro tem if he would please join us as we present awards of excellence and thank them for their service. We're going to ask fourth ward alderman Bill Denell to please join us. If we can give him a round of applause. We will keep going. Seventh ward alderman Brandon Tolliver. And alderman at large Ron Warman.
So this mayor's award of excellence is hereby honorably presented to alderman Bill Denell for your stalwart service to the city of Aurora. Your insightful leadership and thoughtful decision-making have significantly contributed to Aurora's progress. Your vision and dedication have laid the foundation for a brighter future, inspiring success for generations to come. Mayor Richard C. Irvin, mayor, Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Again, I would like to present the mayor's award of excellence is hereby honorably presented to alderman Brandon Tolliver for your stalwart service to the city of Aurora. Your insightful leadership and thoughtful decision-making have significantly contributed to Aurora's progress. Your vision and dedication have laid the foundation for a brighter future, inspiring success for generations to come. Mayor Richard C. Irvin, city of Aurora, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And again, I'm hereby honorably predisposed to give the mayor's award of excellence to alderman Ron Warman for your stalwart service to the city of Aurora. Your insightful leadership and thoughtful decision-making have significantly contributed to Aurora's progress. Your vision and dedication have had, have laid the foundation for a brighter future, inspiring success for generations to come. Richard C. Irvin, mayor, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Congratulations. So I just want to say just a couple of words. I've had occasion to serve with my colleagues here for a number of years. Brandon Tolliver for two years, and we've shared elbows together and, and ideas and the like, and I wish you much success in the future. Aurora is better for your participation, and we're really glad that you served in the council for two years. So we wish you well. Ron Warman, alderman at large, I've known Ron for several years prior to being an alderman. I've known him as owner and operator of great restaurants. And greatly involved in the community, him and his wife, and we wish you much success. You've been a great alderman while you served. I appreciate your service. And Bill Denell, I've known the longest, not only twelve years in the city council, but your time is on the Fox Valley Park District since the nineteen eighties. We've worked well together at Superintendent Parks, and we're going to miss you in the council as well, and we wish you and Marge and your family all the best. So congratulations, all three of you.
Thank you so much for your service. If any of you five gentlemen have any remarks, please feel free.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this award here. I can't wait to look up the word stalwart and see what that means. It's, I hope it's good, so, super excited. So, I just want to, I'll be short and sweet. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this city for four years. I meet a lot of great people that work for the city and then live within the city. I wish everybody nothing but the best. John, good luck to you. Hope things go well, and thanks, everyone. Honey, I'm going to be home a lot more often, so be ready. So, thank you, everybody.
Also, thank you so much for the award, Mayor Pro Tem. I would just say, you know, it was one of the honors of my lifetime to be appointed during the Renaissance era of Aurora's times. So I look forward to see what the new administration is going to do. Keep me a positive attitude, but don't worry, I'm not going anywhere. You guys will see me again. Just thank you all for the opportunity and everything, all the people that I've met, all the relationships that I've made. Those things will continue, and again, thank you for everything. It was a time, a time to be had, for sure.
I'm going to try to make this short as well. It has been a wonderful, great honor to serve as the alderman of the fourth ward for the last twelve years. And I think the Fox Valley Park District prepared me well for serving and also a little planning commission in between. So I am very proud of what we've been able to accomplish, and to keep it short and sweet, I think what we did over at the Copley Hospital, converting that vacant building with broken windows into a wonderful place for kids to live, adults to live, the V and A and the one thirty-one to have a home. It's really changed that neighborhood. Also proud of what we've been able to do over at the AAU neighborhood. When I first started, we, I got a lot of phone calls about overcrowding of cars, and we took steps to take care of that. AAU deserves a lot of credit for that with the garage, and now they're building a new library. It's going to be beautiful over there. And lastly, but not least, once you get done talking to people about, you know, their neighborhood and what's happening there, they always ask me about downtown. And I'm very proud of what I've been able to accomplish, starting with taking out the meters years ago. Mike, you remember that? We took the meters out. But the opportunities that we have downtown and that we feel safe to be downtown make me very proud. So thank you so much.
One more round of applause for alderman Bill Denell, alderman Brandon Tolliver, and alderman Ron Warman. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. We have one more final presentation tonight. We bid farewell to the leader of our staff here as chief of staff for the last eight years, but twenty-four years here at the city of Aurora. He's certainly left an indelible mark at city hall and throughout the Aurora community. Ladies and gentlemen, bid farewell to Mr. Alex Alexandru.
Okay, I'd like to present to Alex the mayor's award of excellence is honorably presented to Alex Alexandru. For your stalwart service to the city of Aurora, your insightful leadership and thoughtful decision-making have significantly contributed to Aurora's progress. Your vision and dedication have had, have laid the foundation for a brighter future, inspiring success for generations to come. Richard C. Irvin, mayor, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Congratulations. So if I can just say something first, and the best will be said for last, I've, I've known you since you were the risk manager. You came and was hired by the city of Aurora, and not only did you do an impeccably good job for a position that we never really filled prior to that, to everything that you've filled and done for the city of Aurora since. And I can, I can say proudly and honestly that the city of Aurora is, is better for your service and your participation in the day-to-day operation of what we accomplished here for the last several decades. You've been a big part of that. We're going to miss you, and we wish you well, Alex. You and your family, all the best.
Thank you, everyone. This is extremely humbling, and I'm eternally grateful to all the mayors that I've worked for. Mayor Stover, who gave me that first opportunity, Mayor Weisner, Mayor O'Connor, may he rest in peace, and Mayor Irvin, who put me in this last position in two thousand and seventeen. So every one of those mayors had a vision. Every one of those mayors, regardless of what anybody said, had the best intentions for the city of Aurora. Brought a vision, put a tremendous staff together, relied on several constants. The constant excellence of our public safety, of police and fire and public works, the nitty-gritty, bread-and-butter things that I think people take for granted, that every single day benefits our residents. And so now, Clayton mentioned, it's a, it's a time of transition. Mayor-elect Lash, I wish you nothing but the best, you and your administration. He brings forth a vision, the, our residents have spoken, and so it's up to all of us to support the new administration. I've always said to our staff, in every position I've had, you have to check your biases at the door and do the right thing at the end of the day for our residents. And then, we just don't have residents. We have visitors who come to our community. We have people who take advantage of the arts or the culture or our museums, our parks. They use the Fox River to recreate. So we owe a duty to those folks, too. And so I know that the new administration will prioritize that, and I'm here to say, whatever I can do to help, I'm, I'm still a beloved resident here in town. I love Aurora. I'm looking forward to spending more time with my family. I see my wife and boys here, and, you know, this is a twenty-four-seven job, believe it or not. So I wouldn't necessarily believe everything you, you read on, on the internet. It is a real job. The staff here does a magnificent job. I've been blessed with working such, with such incredibly professional people and employees who love this city as well. And so I, I trust that that will continue under the new administration. And lastly, I can't forget our city council. I've worked with many aldermen and women over the years, and I'm very grateful to them for their support, their willingness to serve. Remember, these are folks that are also residents of Aurora who've made a decision to put themselves out there, and they do it knowing what's at stake. So thank you to our alderpeople for your leadership and your support, and I'm forever grateful, and again, thank you again for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
And that concludes the presentations. We'll see everyone at the Paramount Theater at six-thirty for the mayoral and aldermanic inauguration. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the mayoral appointments. Will the clerk please read the first one?
Twenty-five zero-two-six-four, a resolution approving the appointment of Luis Lopez and Gus Antsaglis to the Aurora LGBTQ advisory board.
Is there a motion? Been moved by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderman Warman. Any discussion? No questions? Please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith. Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. The clerk please read the next item. Are there any members of the LGBTQ commission here this evening? You can be recognized and stand if you are. Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Next item then, twenty-five zero-three-zero-one.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Michael Lippman, Shirley Payne, and Anna Diaz to the Aging in Community Advisory Board.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Any questions or discussion? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay, this motion carries. The resolution is approved. Is Shirley and Anna or Michael Lippman here this evening? Okay, we'll go on then. Clerk, please read the next item.
Twenty-five zero-three-zero-six, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Dr. Robert Halverson to the Aurora Education Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Any questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade. Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
This motion carries. Is anybody present from, for this appointment? No? Okay, please call the next item, twenty-five zero-three-one-one.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Jaden Bedio to the Sister Cities Commission.
Is there a motion? Moved by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Is Jaden Bedio here? Yes, thank you. We appreciate your service. Thank you very much. And clerk, please read the next item.
Twenty-five zero-three-one-two, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Chance Trotter to the Aurora Youth Council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman, Alderwoman Garza. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug. Alderwoman Bade. Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
This motion is carried. The resolution is approved. Is Chance Trotter here this evening? Welcome. Thank you for your service. Clerk, please read the next resolution.
Twenty-five zero-three-one-three, a resolution approving the reappointment of Dave McCabe to the Aurora Fire Fighters Pennington Fund Board.
Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith. Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Resolution is passed. Is Dave McCabe here? Please stand, Dave. Okay, will the clerk please read the next item?
Twenty-five zero-three-one-four, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Steve Caliza to the Tree Board.
So moved.
Motion. Been moved by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Is Steve here? Please read, read, the next item is the public hearings. Would you please read that?
Mayor Pro Tem, we do not have any members of the public wishing to present public comment.
Oh, okay.
And I will read the first item under public hearings. It's twenty-five zero-three-two-nine. Public hearing on a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Aurora, Kane County, and the city of Elgin, the participation in the two thousand and twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, and the use of the city of Aurora's portion toward the Aurora Police Department equipment purchase.
Sorry for the interruption. I'm here for AFD. All right, the staff has a presentation on the public hearing item. Is there anyone from the public wishing, who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? There being none, are there any questions or comments from city council on this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
There's been a motion to close by the public hearing by Alderman Patty Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
All right, Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Twenty-five zero-three-six-six, public hearing only related to real property, commonly known as six-twenty-four West Illinois Avenue, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith on the proposed special service area two-two-one S E K Sure Bond in the city of Aurora with several related pins.
Does staff have a presentation on this public item, hearing item? Is there anyone from the public wish, who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
Are there questions for, from comments from city council? There being none, there's been a motion by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
All right, this here is adjourned. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Twenty-five zero-three-six-seven, public hearing only related to real property, commonly known as 2815 Bilter Road, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith on the proposed special service area 222 Seafree Butterfield Lot 502 in the City of Aurora, DuPage County, PIN 0705-105003.
Does staff have a presentation on, for this public hearing item? Is there anyone from the public wish, who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Are there any questions or comments from City Council? There being none, madam, there's been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
This here is adjourned. Call the next item.
Twenty-five zero-three-six-eight, public hearing only related to real property, commonly known as 791 North Farnsworth, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith on the proposed special service area 223 791 North Farnsworth in the county, in the City of Aurora, Kane County, PINs 1513-301-028 and 1513-301-012.
Does staff have a presentation for the public hearing on this item? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Are there any questions or comments from City Council on this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
Has been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
This hearing is adjourned. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Twenty-five zero-three-seven-zero, public hearing only related to real property, commonly known as 743 McClure Road, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith on the proposed special service area 224 743 McClure Road in the City of Aurora, Kane County, PINs 1513-326008 and 1513-326009.
Does staff have a presentation for public hearing on this item? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Are there any questions or comments from City Council on this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
There being none, there's been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
The hearing is adjourned. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
We are on to the consent agenda.
All right. Will the clerk now please read both agendas in full? Next we will hear both consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda. Madam Clerk, read them in full.
Twenty-five zero-two-one-three, a resolution approving an automotive parts and supply service agreement with a genuine parts company for the city's fleet maintenance operations using the Equalist Group Purchasing Cooperative. Twenty-five zero-two-four-four, a resolution adopting the 2025 City of Aurora's Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. Twenty-five zero-two-five-seven, a resolution to award a contract to Geneva Construction in the amount of $3,440,441.25 for the 2025 Citywide Street Resurfacing West-North Project. Twenty-five zero-two-eight-one, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase technology services for Fire Station 9 from multiple vendors for not to exceed amount of $365,498. Twenty-five zero-two-eight-two, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase technology services for Fire Station 13 from multiple vendors for not to exceed amount of $237,874. Twenty-five zero-three-zero-two, a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a plime event vehicle exhaust system in Fire Station Number Seven in the amount of $80,288 to Hastings Air Energy. Twenty-five zero-three-one-zero, a resolution to award the South Lincoln Avenue and Sim Street Sewer Separation Project located in Ward 4 to H Linden and Sons Sewer and Water Incorporated in the bid amount of $179,748. Twenty-five zero-three-one-five, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A package sales liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from One Stop Incorporated in Ward 4. Twenty-five zero-three-two-six, a resolution to award the Jackson Street, Sim Street, and Fifth Street Water Separate Sewer Separation and Fifth Avenue Water Main Replacement Project located in Ward 3 to H Linden and Sons Sewer and Water Incorporated in the bid amount of $863,333. Twenty-five zero-three-three-zero, a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Aurora, the City of Elgin, and Kane County, their participated, participation in the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Twenty-five zero-three-three-five, an ordinance vacating a portion of the storm water control easement on the property located at 3011 Lundquist Drive in Will and Kendall County, Aurora. Twenty-five zero-three-four-five, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Fox Valley Park District concerning the staging of Independence Day fireworks on park district property in 2025 and 2026. Twenty-five zero-three-four-six, a resolution authorizing the execution of a three-year contract with Pyrotechnico Fireworks for Independence Day fireworks displays in a total annual amount not to exceed $46,000. Twenty-five zero-three-four-seven, a resolution to award the rental of crowd control barricades for parades to United Rent Offense and Addison. Twenty-five zero-three-four-eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of a labor agreement between the City of Aurora and Aurora Supervisors Association of the Aurora Police Department from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028. Twenty-five zero-three-four-nine, a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned seven parcels totaling 18 acres on Bilter Road east of Farnsworth Avenue. Twenty-five zero-three-five-four, a resolution authorizing the execution of a labor agreement between the City of Aurora and local 1514 Council 31 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028. Twenty-five zero-three-six-five, a resolution approving the appointment of Tracy Basick as Director of Zoning and Planning. Twenty-five zero-three-seven-three, a resolution authorizing the purchase of pollution environmental liability insurance for the period of April 30th, 2025 to April 30th, 2028. Twenty-five zero-three-three-seven, a resolution accepting the improvements and waiving the maintenance security for Meyer West Aurora at 1444 North Orchard Road. Twenty-five zero-three-nine-eight, an ordinance correcting and replacing O-25028, Chapter 27, Section 27-176, parking, commercial vehicles, trailers, truck, trailers, and truck, tractor, truck, tractors in residential districts. Twenty-five zero-four-zero-nine, approval of the minutes of Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 City Council Meeting.
So moved. Second.
Are there any, before we, there's been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Before we consider that motion and second to approve, are there any questions or motions to remove any items from the either the direct to council consent agenda or the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Bug?
Thank you. On item number two-five-zero-two-four-four, if someone from engineering is here, we just didn't want to gloss over this important matter. Of course, we were very short on time during our COW. Mr. Bauer, can you talk a little bit, very briefly, about the linking of the Virgil-Gilman Trail and the Bonde Creek Trail Connection project we've worked on for over two decades?
Yeah, so Jason Bauer, Department of Public Works. So that was one of the projects that we did discuss with the consultant. They've got some interesting ideas on ways that we might be able to make those, make that connection without a pedestrian bridge. Basically, it would be a flashing beacon crossing that would get out, get people to cross one side of the road at one time, then use the median, and then cross with flashers to get to the other side. So it would be a lot more feasible. We still do have to coordinate with IDOT and the Village of Montgomery because that's not within our jurisdiction, but I believe that regionally, I think that there would be support for it.
And when we finally connect those two trails, how many miles of bike trails will finally be connected?
Oh, that's a good question. I have no idea.
It is over 100 miles. That was the only piece left. And thank you for your work, Ken Schroth, wherever you are. He worked on this tirelessly. So thank you to the board and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that, on the item? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to remove four items from the consent agenda and put it on unfinished. Agenda item twenty-five zero-two-eight-one. Agenda item twenty-five zero-two-eight-two. Agenda item twenty-five zero-three-four-eight. And agenda item twenty-five zero-three-five-four.
There been a motion to remove those items? Is there a second?
Second.
Been motioned a second, those items will be removed and put on unfinished business. Any other questions or comments or any items in here been moved? Alderman, Alderman Seville?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say and recognize Tracy Basick, who's on the agenda for consent for Director of Planning and Zoning. Thank you, Tracy, for choosing to step up and apply for the job. And we all think you're going to do a great job. You've got a great track record and history working with the city these many years, and we know you do a fine job. We wish you well. And if I can also say, Ed Seaman, who's sitting close by. Ed, thank you for your years of service. We've worked well together over the years, and we wish you and your family well, and we'll miss you, but we wish you the best. So thank you for your years of service as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Smith?
Yes. So before we go on to unfinished business, I'd like to move to suspend City of Aurora Court of Ordinance, Section 2-107(c) and 3.1-40-35 from the Illinois Municipal Code for today's unfinished business.
So the only thing that's pending right now is consent agenda. So are we removing items from the?
No, I said unfinished business.
So we're not, we're not there yet?
Okay.
So we'll get there, we'll get there in one second. We're just still on unfinished consent agenda. So are there any questions, comments, or any additional items that would need to be removed from the consent agenda or direct to council consent agenda? There being none, a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, call the roll, lest the items that Alderman Lash has motioned to remove from the consent agenda.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries against consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda are both approved lest the items that were removed. Madam Clerk, let's go on to unfinished business. Read the first item under unfinished business.
Twenty four. Do I now have to do my motion again?
All right, now at this point, before we start unfinished business, Alderman Smith has a motion to make.
So, I am motioning to suspend City of Aurora Ordinance, section two dash one zero seven C and three point one dash four zero dash three five from the Illinois Municipal Code. Suspend both of those for today's unfinished business.
I'm second.
So, there's a motion, a second. We're going to go with the first part, which is a, a city ordinance. We don't necessarily have to cite the, the Illinois State Ordinance, but we have an ordinance that covers this. We've got a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Yes.
Alderman. This, well, actually it's not debatable, but do you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead, what's your question?
Yeah, I ask that that be fully read into the record.
It, it just was.
Not just the caption. We need it fully in the record.
Well, I think it just was.
Pardon?
It just was read by Alderman Smith.
No, I, no, the ordinance. Read the ordinance. While we're suspending.
Council.
Believe the pending motion made by Alderman Smith is to suspend section two one oh seven C, which is a procedural rule of the city council.
Okay, what does that procedural rule say?
I have it here. Under, under section three, excuse me, under Code of Ordinance, there is a parallel provision, which is why I said the municipal one two. Our section two dash one zero seven C that provides that at least at the request of two aldermen, an item scheduled for consideration at a regular council meeting may be postponed until the next regular council meeting. During such postponement, the, the item shall be remanded to and considered by the appropriate committee. The aldermen requesting and remanding shall appear at the committee meeting and present their reasons for reconsideration. The remanding matters shall be immediately returned to council at the next regular city council meeting.
However, this motion that you made prevents that, correct? Is that correct, council?
It's a motion to suspend.
Suspend the rules, suspend the rules that you decided. So, there's been a motion. So, do you have a question, Alderman Lash?
Sure.
Again, this is not debatable, but we'll take a question if you want clarification as to what was just read to you.
So, the, the motion actually.
The motion actually also included state municipal code three point one zero four.
So, we're not going to focus on that. We're focusing on the local municipal code, which is what, what?
Well, there was a motion made, there was a second. If, if someone would like to amend the motion that was made in the second that was made, that would be correct procedure.
So, a, as I stated, we're just going to focus, Alderman Smith, on the local municipal code.
Okay. I retract.
Turn your microphone.
My motion for the.
Microphone.
That's not working. I retract the three point one zero four zero three five, which is the Illinois Municipal Code.
I said, been moking. So, second on that, oh, there's been a motion and a second. All right, there are no further questions. Madam Clerk, call the roll. I'm sorry. Do you have some clarification, questions?
Yep.
Go ahead, Alderman Bug.
So, a no vote will mean we will go with, forward with our standing procedure. A yes vote means we will change the rules for this meeting.
Counsel, and it doesn't change the rules, suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
For today only.
What Alderman Bug said was correct.
What Alderman Bug said was correct. All right, so, Madam Clerk.
Say that one more time, just so everybody understands.
There you go, brother. You can use mine.
Question for legal.
The question pending before the council at this point is to suspend a specific rule of the city council's rules of procedure. The question requires a two-thirds vote. A vote in favor is to suspend, a vote in opposition is to defeat that motion, and the rules would prevail as they exist.
Question for legal. Is there any precedent for this or rules ever being suspended in the past in your time and tenure here as corporate counsel?
There have been. There, there is a specific provision of the city code, I believe it's section two dash nine nine, which expressly provides for the suspension of the procedural rules of the city council by a two-thirds vote. This has been done previously, I can recall specifically in the fall of 2017 with respect to a motion to reconsider.
All right, so, Madam Clerk. Thank you, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Pass.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Pass.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
No.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
No.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
No.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Nine yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, I get a vote on this one as well, don't I? Or do I even need to?
The, the mayor is entitled to vote when an extraordinary majority is required. However, if nine votes have already been cast, the mayor need not cast.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and vote anyway. Yes. Put me down as a yes. All right, so that motion carries. We are suspending the rules. So, now let's go on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk, call, read the first item under unfinished business.
Twenty five. Twenty five, twenty four. Zero five eight six. A resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to purchase a, to process a change order to the agreement with Cordigan Clark of Aurora for architectural design, engineering, and construction services for fire department headquarters, fire station number four in the amount of eight hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars.
The motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any discussion on this item? Now, we have a couple of items on this, so why don't we just start discussion now? I believe Alderman Franco, you did have something you wanted to say.
Well, I was going to talk about a different one.
Well, I mean, they're, they're all going to go together. They're all.
Well, I, so, yeah, so, anyway, you know, we talked about this last time about public safety and the cost of public safety. And as I mentioned last time, it's hard to put a price on public safety. There has been some talk about suspending some of these projects when we've already dedicated millions of dollars to, to architectural fees and things like that. So, it would be, it would be irresponsible for us right now if we're going to do this because we have to do certain things for public safety. We don't put a price on that because of response times in geographic areas for our fire stations. So, that's a given that needs to be done. God forbid if something ever happens to somebody because we're waiting to, to do things politically later on. We need to get these things done now. And if we don't do it now, and we do it later on, and we're going to have to do it later on, the cost is going to be millions, millions more. So, I don't think it's fair to our residents if we don't address these things without a political bias, doing it the right way for their safety and for their financial stability of the city. I just think it makes sense to do this now while the costs are where they're at and we don't lose the money we already put forth. So, I just want to throw that out there because, again, the number one job of any government entity is to protect its citizens. And if we don't do that, shame on us. So, I just feel that we're compelled to do that to get this project done.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe during the I T committee discussion with respect specifically to moving station four from its existing location out to Indian Trail Road, the move did not change the heat map that we all saw with respect to this move. The heat map changed on stations nine and thirteen, but this one did not change the heat map. So, I just want to clarify that point when you talk about response times. And, and I believe that Chief McCabe went on the record during I N T. If you want to clarify that position during this time, you know, feel free to weigh in.
Good afternoon, Fire Chief Dave McCabe. So, what I said at the meeting is that stations nine and thirteen are going to change the heat map for the better in those areas. However, station nine currently being just east of Molitor and Farnsworth and without another station moving up that way, you actually are going to move, you, we are going to have an increased response time to that area just north of the police department, the Marywood area. That response time would increase in that area.
So, just to be clear, when we looked at the map, there are areas that were red and based on the report at that time, without the moving of, of, of fire station fourteen, there was no change. But there will be an immediate change. It'll affect Ginger Creek, it'll affect Stone Bridge, it'll stick, it'll affect all those areas in there if we do not build a station four. Is that correct?
Correct. When I was asked about what the heat map would look like, what I said was without paying for another study to be done, I can't tell you, you know, they have all kinds of computer programs based on traffic flows and anticipated growth and all that, which is why we paid that company twenty-five thousand dollars to do that study because they could get way more data than we could just, I mean, we could try it with the calculator and add up one call at a time for twenty-four thousand calls, but that's not realistic. So, that's why we had this company come in and give us that study. But obviously, if we move a fire station further away from the area and we don't move one up to kind of fill that hole, that area is going to see an increase in response time.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Chief McCabe, I have a dilemma and I need your help. You've been a fireman for twenty-five years, correct?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. One of the fire stations built not long after you became a fireman was station twelve, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Station twelve is Ward nine. Do you remember the financing source for that station?
I remember hearing rumors about it. I was a newer firefighter paramedic. I wasn't really privy to that information other than through the middle, but I believe there were some impact fees from some of the builders that helped with that.
Okay. Yeah, we, we created SSAs for Ward nine. So, station twelve was paid for one hundred percent by the residents of Ward nine. So, the residents of Ward one didn't pay for it. Residents of Ward ten didn't pay for it. Residents for Ward eight. Any other ward, only Ward nine residents paid for it. Their own fire station. Now, I, as the alderman of Ward nine and being asked to tell my residents of Ward nine that you now have to pay for another fire station in another part of town. When we paid for our own, one hundred percent, that SSA went to pay for the fire station. It went to pay for the equipment that went in the fire station and it went to build our schools of Ward nine. So, I have a dilemma. You know, do I do what's best for the residents who I represent every day as an alderman? Because we paid for our fire station. One hundred percent. No one helped us. We paid. So, what do you suggest I tell the residents of Ward nine?
So, we don't, I know we have nine fire stations built here on tenth, but these are not individual islands. These are not, you know, we don't have the same equipment at every station. There's not a ladder truck at station twelve. So, when the carbon monoxide alarm goes off or when somebody's involved in an accident and needs to be extricated, the ladder truck from station eight is coming down there. So, it's not, this is station twelve, you know, it's not its own little city where this is its own little fire department and we're not going to go out and help the other stations and they're not going to come here. So, I can't tell you as to why that was done or how that was done, but I can tell you is the last thing we want to do as a fire department is start thinking in silos.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think you're correct. I think you're correct. But I was an alderman at that time when, when that financing was put together. But it was put together and I, as a resident of Ward nine, I paid for it. For eighteen years, I paid for that fire station. Like I said, no one else in the city. The other nine wards didn't pay a penny toward station twelve. Only we did. So, I just want you to know and I, I want the public to know. Maybe it's an old type of financing, that SSA, that we don't do anymore, but I have to answer to the residents of Ward nine. And they paid twenty years in that SSA every, every year. So.
Thank you, Alderman Bug. Chief, based on the growth of the city and the fact that we had, based on this study and we had to relocate fire stations to have the appropriate coverage to make sure that our residents didn't die in fires and have their houses burned down and even, you know, terrible loss, we built two other fire stations as well. Is that right?
That's correct.
Where are those two other fire stations?
I hear about the two we're building now.
Right now.
Fire station thirteen, which is located the corner of Nanon Filter. Would protect the outlet mall, the casino, some of our highest, you know, tax income areas along with a lot of the new residential growth up there.
Yep.
And fire station nine, which, when it was built, it was on a little piece of land in the middle of nowhere on Deal Road. With the understanding there would eventually be a bridge built over eighty-eight to access north of eighty-eight. That bridge was never built and obviously will never be now with all the building up out there. And so, we realized six or eight years ago that this station is not in a very good location. You can't go north or south. You can only go east or west. You could literally see calls on the highway. You could see fires on the other side of the highway, or the road, and still take six minutes to get there. And that is not an acceptable level service for us. You know, if you're out in a rural area and you got a volunteer fire department and they got a fifteen mile drive to get there, that's acceptable. But in a city our size and with what our residents and our businesses have come to expect of service from us, we don't, we don't see how it can be any other way.
And either of those fire stations did we use SSAs?
Not as far as I'm aware.
Right. And I believe everybody on the council voted in support of them. Even showed up the ribbon, at the, at the ground breakings. We didn't use SSAs for them and we're, and, and the position is we're not using SSA for this main fire station that's going to be in the public safety corridor there. Any other questions or comments? Mayor. Alderman Barrero.
Yes, I, I need to speak up for my residents. This is in Ward one. And when we started down this path, the fire department put out a study to better serve all the residents in Aurora. So, they did a study on response times. So, in order to improve the response times, they came up with a plan to, to move a station, move station nine out of Ward one to the south and then build a new station thirteen, which was just mentioned by the chief. Part of this plan also included the movement of station four. Right now, station four is in, is, is in, in Pigeon Hill and very close to station one. So, by moving station four from Garfield Park adjacent to the police station, that would improve the response times. And if you look on the map, it makes sense to spread these stations out and put them on bigger roads where they can move faster instead of being in the neighborhoods to, to get, to get to their calls. So, so that, that was the impetus for this. We, we knew that there was a plan based on improving the public safety of our residents, whether it was for fighting fires or for sending paramedics to, to meet the needs of the residents. Also, I want to say that the station itself was based from the input given by fire department staff as to respect, with respect to their needs. There's been talk about the cost of the fire station. This is not a regular fire station. It is going to house the, the command staff of the fire station. They're going to be moving from central, central station. When they move out, that'll provide a, a space for the fire inspectors to move into. They're, they're crowded now and have a need for additional space. Also, in, in addition to the fire station and command staff being at this new, new station four, it would also be the, the new home for EMA. EMA is our, our agency for keeping this community safe when there are natural disasters or man-made disasters. And all you have to do is look at the news and see that there are things happening that we need to keep our residents safe. We know when the, you know, tornadoes are coming and there's, there's a response to keep our, our residents safe. But if, if, if something happens, we've had, we've had floods here. We've had polar, polar vortexes and we've had to activate our, our EMA center to meet the needs of the residents. But we have other threats, chemical spills and, and people that just want to do harm to people. And so, we need to, we need to have the capacity so that we can work with our, our volunteers because that would, that's what the space is going to be used for. A place for our volunteers to go, to have training. Not only that, but also to be able to train, better train our staff. And so, that's why we need these things. The technology from the EMA is the original technology when they first moved into the fires, to the police station. They are no longer part of the police station. They don't report, the reporting structure is not that they report to the police station. They report now, they're reporting to fire and they're part of the fire team. So, if we, if we delay this, it's only going to cost us more money. If we delay this, it's not, it's not going to be something that's going to meet the needs of the fire department. If the, if the fire department met with the architects about the needs, the, the space needs that they, that they needed and they went into this plan, then why we, why would we want to change it? And so, my main concern is the life safety. We need to have, you know, keep that in mind and be mindful of that. I would not like to be on the other, other end of a call because the fire department did not reach a, a, a resident in time because of the, the, being too far away. So, with that, I just want to, I would like to call the question, Mayor.
Oh, before we call the question, I believe there's a few other questions or comments. Alderman Seville.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know there's been a lot of discussion about this at committee and we had, I thought it was a very good discussion at the last committee hole on this. And I believe, is there a finance director, Chris Minnick here as well?
Mr. Minnick, are you present? All right, can you approach the microphone?
The total cost is around thirty-four point nine million dollars. I've heard and talked to some of my constituents and, and they're concerned with public safety for our community, for everybody, that we continue to invest in public safety for the benefit of all our community. It spills over in the different wards when we need people to help during times of crises. My concern is if, if we decide to hold the project or even redesign it, it's going to cost the citizens more money. I know the current cost was one point two million to, to design, is that correct?
Uh, we've actually invested. John, can you put up the slideshow, please, or the, the deck that I sent? Thank you. This slide actually goes into what hap, what would happen if we terminated the station four process. So, as of today, we've spent about almost one point two four million dollars, one million two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Most of that has been, in fact, the overwhelming majority of that has been design costs related to Cordigan Clark's contract to design fire station number four. Were we to terminate the process, there would be additional out-of-pocket costs that equal approximately four hundred eleven thousand dollars to both vendors, to both Leopardo and to Cordigan Clark. The majority goes to Cordigan Clark, but there is, there is a portion that would go to Leopardo as well. So, that would mean that the total amount that we would have spent on fire station four would equal about one million six hundred and fifty thousand, a little more. That would end up being a sunk cost and we would need to spend that again if we were to redesign the facility at, at some point in the future. Additionally, I did go through and just do a simple three percent escalation on the costs as they stand today for three years and including the one point six million dollars that we've spent to date on fire station number four, that would bring the total cost to construct fire station number four up to about forty million dollars from the thirty-four point nine that we discussed a few minutes ago. One of the wild cards in the cost escalation analysis, though, would be the impact of any tariffs. These bids were solicited and collected prior to the imposition of tariffs and that policy being enacted at the federal level. So, as we speak today, it would be kind of impossible for me to try to understand what the, what the impact of those tariffs might be. But if that policy were still in place three years from now, I would anticipate that they would, that they would have an impact. So, getting to the, the conclusion down at the bottom that, that we've kind of talked about that we'll never have a better chance and, and station number four will never be a better value than it is today. So.
Thank you. And Mr. Minnick, in your, your escalation clause, does that even account to any potential inflation or, or labor costs that might increase between now and whenever it's built as well?
That's what the three percent escalators intended to, to take a look at. I escalated it three percent each year for a three-year period. I think that's a fairly conservative estimate in terms of, of construction cost escalation and what could happen. But again, that, that was the number that, that was selected to try to account for inflation.
Sure, I understand, yeah. Well, I, I think I would tend to agree that we could always hold something off and, and attempt to make it cheaper, but at what cost? And it seems to be that the cost would, would be borne by the citizens in bearing that extra cost to save money. I question whether we can save money by doing it then. I would also say that sometimes it's just good to, with, with the, with the value that I think that is built into this, with the ideas that we have, the need for the community. Even if we stop the project, I understand from the last meeting, we stop the project, I understand from the last meeting, we need another $2 million from emergency management just to get them up to speed.
I believe there are some deferred maintenance items that the fire and EMA departments would be looking, fire department and EMA division would be looking at to bring those facilities into line.
Okay. And I also understand in our presentation by our architect, that there are green elements built into the building and also the potential to add in the future, is that correct?
Hi, I'm Lauren Kylie with Cordigan Clark, and yes, that's correct. So, we have infrastructure for electric vehicle charging stations set up for the project currently, and then we do, in our design, have inherently contributed some green and lead design elements.
Okay, thank you. And so, with the information that's been presented to us the last couple of meetings and this evening, I'm in favor of moving forward on this. I think it's a good thing, as was mentioned, to begin the project now and not to hold off for another day and end up costing the taxpayers even more money, I think, in the long run. So, I'll be voting yes on this project.
Alderman Smith.
So, I don't know about my fellow aldermen, but this goes back, this is a presentation that you guys gave to us in 2021, which was the Fire Station Location Analysis. I've taken this to heart ever since then and have been concerned about our fire station since then, and as we have moved forward with this, I was very happy to see, you know, the start of the two that we already started, but then to leave a portion of our city in a gap, an unsafe fire slash emergency gap, I just didn't see any way around the fact that we needed to do this fire station. We need our entire city to be safe and we, as public servants, safety of our residents should be the number one issue for us. And if it's not your number one issue up here as an alderman, then you're no more than a politician because safety of our residents is the one thing that we should be putting at the top of our priority each and every time we sit down here. So, I will be voting in favor of this.
Are there any aldermen who haven't had an opportunity to speak? Have any other questions or comments? There being none, Madam Clerk, let's call a roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
No.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
No.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
No.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Nine yes, three no.
Motion carries, resolutions approved for the next item.
250259, a resolution authorizing payment to Leopardo Construction in an amount not to exceed $29,484,587 with an additional 5% contingency for the construction of the new Fire Department Headquarters Fire Station Number Four, consistent with the scope of work authorized by Resolution R 24284.
Somewhat.
There's been a motion to second. I believe we talked about this. Madam Clerk, call the item.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add some clarity to my position and my no vote on this because I didn't make a clear statement before. As I communicated to the Aurora Fire leadership, that my intent would be to delay this, not stop it, and to build a more energy-efficient building. The grants writer has done some significant research to find out that we would be eligible for municipal bonds that would, if we built to a higher energy-efficient level, a world-class facility and a one-of-a-kind facility probably in the entire United States. So, that's what we're missing out on here. It's not, it's a simple delay, not trying to stop public safety from moving forward. And for those who are definitely concerned about that, I mean, that study was done in 2021 and it's 2025 right now. So, I just think, add those thoughts and clarity so you understand my position, which I think I've communicated clearly.
What we don't want to do is wait another four years since it's taken us this long to get to this with all the planning that we have to done, had to do, and waiting another two years to even start additional planning would add two plus another four. So, any interruption in the direction of this now would halt the building of the fire stations that are sorely needed by our community to safeguard lives right now, not at some point in the future. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
No.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
No.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
No.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries, organs adopted, one more item for the Fire Department and EMA. Madam Clerk, read that item.
250283, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase technology services for Fire Station Four from multiple vendors for a total not to exceed amount of $1,704,493.43.
Somewhat.
There's been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Madam Clerk, we've talked about this, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
No.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
No.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Ten yes, two no.
Motion carries, congratulations, AFD and EMA. I think this is much needed for our community and I think you do a whole heck of a lot more than save cats out of trees. You guys are heroes. Thank you for what you do for Aurora. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
250300, a resolution authorizing the execution of an airport maintenance operations agreement with airfield maintenance services for an initial five-year term in the initial amount of $424,500 with an automatic five-year renewal upon mutual consent by both parties. An annual increase based on the Consumer Price Index will be capped at 4%.
Somewhat.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. Any question, discussion, Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like the council consider, I'd like to look and explore the opportunity to bring this contract, or bring this in-house and do it through our facilities management. If you looked at this contract in detail, number one, you'll find is that it does not expire until December of 2025. So, this new contract, which is a five-year contract, would go into effect in January. So, there is no rush to do this. Number two, if you looked at the contract in detail, you'll find out that this company is using majority of our equipment, our snow plows, our fuel, and they're even using for free a house residence on the property. I think the only thing they provide is their lawn mowing equipment. It would like to be this, I would like to have at least a discussion about bringing this in-house and reducing the cost and the tax burden on the taxpayers. I would have held this item, but somebody invoked Rule 107-2, canceled out that, so I would ask that the council vote no and give me an opportunity to vote to negotiate that and bring that service in-house.
Who from staff pushed, put this item forward? Is that Steve? Was that you? Come on, step up, step forward, brother. State your name and say why we're doing this and why, because you've worked with the city for a long time, matter of fact, worked in Public Works, why this is a contract that you would want to push forward versus having it come under the city auspices.
Thank you. Steve Andrus, Airport Division. As the mayor said, I've been with the city for quite a long period of time. I wanted to read this real quickly because I might address the alderman's question to some degree. So, let me just read it and then we'll go from there. So, this stemmed from the questions that came up during the BZE Committee. We didn't have an opportunity to speak to those at the COW meeting, but I will say, Airfield Maintenance Services not only possesses the knowledge and certifications required by the FAA, they also possess 30-plus years of institutional knowledge and experience specific to our airport. Additionally, AMS provides a staff member who resides on airport property to respond to any emergency or issue that may arise and is on 24 hours of call. We believe it's in the city's best interest to continue using Airfield Maintenance Services as our primary airport maintenance provider. This particular company stems back, or goes back to the early 60s when Rex Wolf was the maintenance caretaker for the airport. The airport was a little bit different back then, much smaller, obviously, and his son took over the maintenance operations probably 30 years ago. He passed away two years ago. John Bros, who worked with this company for 25-plus years, has now taken over. So, the institutional knowledge that's required to operate, not only airport-specific equipment, they deal with air traffic control all the time, they have to understand how planes fly in, fly out, what's required by the FAA in terms of clearing snow, but that's not what they do 100%. They also maintain the navigational aids, they also maintain lighting and airfield signage, they do the striping out there. So, as it relates to potentially a city crew, you're talking about several departments that have to be on call 24 hours a day. Our estimation, it would probably cost, you know, somewhere in the millions in today's numbers to provide the same level of service. So, we can go through the exercise to do that, we'd be happy to participate in that, but from our past investigations back in 2016, it wasn't even close. For 400, and I think they're $408,000 in today's dollars, assuming a 4% increase, it'd be 424,500, I think is what the contract calls for. You said there's time, but if we have to lose time, we have nobody that's going to be able to cover that contract if another contractor hasn't been chosen. And I'd be willing to guess, we can't find anybody with a knowledge specific to Aurora's airport.
Alderman Franco.
So, Alderman Lash had a good point, but when you bring up airport, airfield certification, FAA certification, NAVA maintenance, nobody knows how to do it unless you're certified and knows how to do it. And obviously, that's a safety factor, too. So, good point, but what you make, your point is better because it's a specialty.
It is a specialty.
It is a specialty and we can't, again, this is a safety issue because I've worked with the FAA for a while. That's important to have those certifications. And so, if they have it and they've been doing it and knowing that airport, like you said, all those things put into blender really are good things that we need to have them do that because otherwise, we would not be able to step up to their standards.
Yeah. I will also add with respect to City of Aurora electricians helping out at the airport, they have. They won't go on the airfield side because they won't work at that high voltage. So, it's just another reason, I think, I think we've got a great deal and I would still recommend that we continue with this company.
Alderman Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a couple of discussions with Steve on this topic and read through it very carefully. One of the things that I asked him, do you have any comparisons to the cost of the services that we're doing? And Steve has included that in the report, both the DuPage County Airport Law, that you give the details, but it appears that we, the City of Aurora is getting a pretty good deal on this. And again, I just want to throw out, you know, we talk about using city crews to do some of this work. We already contracted a lot of grass mowing and snow plowing with contractors and I think the standards at the airport are a little higher than our city streets.
Well, they're mowing in restricted areas, in runway safety areas. They have to get clearance to cross runways and actually mow in some of those areas. So, it's not, you know, Joe's Lawn Service that has a mower and a snowplow, you have to really understand how to report runway conditions and, you know, all the FAA things that Alderman Franco understands, but very specific to the field of aviation. And again, we've worked with this company for several years. You know what they're doing? All the tenants give them glowing praises during inclement weather. The pilots have this company's cell phone, they call them and we make sure to get the runways cleared, you know, like half an hour in advance. So, I don't know how you would staff somebody from the city 24 hours. Towers only open from 7:00 to 9:00, but the airfields open 24 hours a day.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Lash.
I'd welcome the opportunity to talk further about it, certainly had a full schedule and would like to at least have that discussion. If the council's okay, I'd like to at least amend the motion to make it a one-year contract. I personally don't see why, with this coming up at the end of 2025, there should be no rush, but to make it a one-year contract so we have time to work through the dialogue.
There's been a motion to make this a one-year contract. Is there a second? Is there a second? There's been no.
Second.
I'm sorry, Alderman Masiacos, second. In this particular case, do we need a roll call or?
Discussion.
I'm sorry, Alderman Bog.
Yeah, so, we have a standing contract right now, correct?
Correct.
When does this contract end?
I don't mean to be flippant, but the contract actually states for two more renewal periods, but because that, those periods weren't identified in the heading of the previous resolution that was passed five years ago-ish, the legal department said that we would need council's permission to do the one-year renewal, even though the contract called for two. So, rather than just do that, we thought we'd come back for a five-year, with an opportunity for another five-year, knowing full well that, you know, they could be canceled anytime due to non-performance.
Right, but when does this contract end?
So, well, we're considering it ending at the end of this year.
Right, December 31st?
Correct.
Six and a half months from now.
Yes.
Okay. So, the current contract, is there any difference in if we consider this two weeks from now in this current contract? Any change?
No, I mean, unless there's a change of companies out there and there's no gaps in service.
No, I'm saying the current contract, not a future contract, the current contract.
Is there any changes?
Yeah.
No.
No. So, if we take this up two weeks from now, there's no change. There's no change a month from now, there's no change three months from now. The contract ends December 31st.
That's correct.
2025.
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Currently, there's a motion, a second on the floor, to amend the contract to a one-year contract versus a five-year contract. Any questions, any questions, discussions on that motion? And this is a roll call?
And the motion to amend.
Motion to amend for.
You can do that by voice vote and then do a roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, we all agree that it's going to be, the aldermen agree that it's going to be one-year contract. Now, let's vote on that one-year contract extension. Any questions? Go ahead.
So, did we all vote on that?
What said aye? I mean, is there any ayes?
I think we should call it because I didn't say anything, so I don't know how, I don't know if the majority of people said anything.
Another question, just to keep it clean, we're going to go ahead and call, do a roll call.
Yeah. What do you see the downfall of one year versus where we are suggesting here five years?
Is price affected at all?
No, there's an escalation clause in the current contract with a 4% cap, you know, as it relates to the CPI. So, there really is no difference. And as I mentioned, probably confusingly, there should have been another one year, two one-year renewals. So, by doing what you're doing, you're essentially just giving them another one year.
That's reasonable. Any other questions on that? If there's no issues, all right. So, this is voting on this contract as Alderman Lash amended for a one-year extension. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
No.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries, item is approved. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
250317, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development and approving the herd house plan description for the property located at 429 West Downer Place.
Somewhat.
There's a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Questions or discussions on this item? I believe this is in your word, Alderman Seville. Did you have any question or discussion on this? Alderman Donnell, I'm so, I'm so sorry. I know you had an issue that you want to talk about. Is there any issues on this particular one?
No, we've had a lot of discussion and I think the contractors already started out there cleaning the place up, so we look forward to this.
Beautiful. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes. I mean, sorry, no, sorry. Never sneezed before on the council call, I apologize.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes. Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries, items approved, and that is good after 40 years, never having sneezed at City Council, brothers. You've made history, man. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
250353, a resolution authorizing new commercial lease agreements with Jolene Ryan, doing businesses Jumpin' Java Coffee for commercial space at the Aurora Transportation Center, Route 59 train station.
Yes.
Somewhat.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Smith. Any question or discussions on this item? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries, resolutions approved. Now let's go over those items that were taken off consent and put on unfinished.
Twenty-five zero-two-eight-one, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase technology services for Fire Station Nine from multiple vendors for a total not to exceed twenty-three-hundred-sixty-five-thousand, four-hundred-ninety-eight dollars.
There's been a motion by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. Any question or discussions on this item? Alderman Lash? Your question? Nope, all right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos? Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville? Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
No.
Ten yes, two no.
All right, item carries and is approved. We got a commercial break? Anybody remember the words of Good and Plenty? Oh, we're back. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Twenty-five zero-two-eight-two, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase technology services for Fire Station Thirteen from multiple vendors for a total not to exceed two-hundred-thirty-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-four dollars.
So moved.
Been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any question or discussions on this item? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
No.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe? Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, two no.
Item carries, Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Twenty-five zero-three-four-eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of a labor agreement between the City of Aurora and Aurora Supervisors Association of the Aurora Police Department from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussion on this item? No questions, discussion, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug? Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries, item is approved. Are there any more items on unfinished? Call the last item on unfinished business.
Twenty-five zero-three-five-four, a resolution authorizing the execution of a labor agreement between the City of Aurora and Local 1514, Council 31, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO, AFSMI, from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. Any question or discussions on this item? No question, discussion, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver? Alderwoman Smith? Alderman Bug?
No.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, two no.
Item carries, motion is approved. Is that the last item on unfinished business?
It is the last item on unfinished business.
At this time, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to let you take back over in this seat. And again, congratulations AFD and EMA.
Okay, we have the first report. Will you please read it?
Twenty-five zero-four-one-zero, Treasurer's Report, December 2024.
I acknowledge that we see the December 2024 Treasurer's Report. Are there any questions or discussion?
So moved.
There's no vote on this, right?